Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the 6th floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, February 10, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Emmens?
Here.
Mr. Meigs?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simms?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Deborah. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We have a very special treat tonight. We have Sherry, who's going to join the meeting later. In fact, be careful what you say, because this is a microphone right here, and so she's been listening through the Internet to all the discussion that's been taking place, all the little table talk. But as we work our way through the agenda, and I understand that you may leave, so we'll try to get the important -- oh, you too? Oh, my goodness, Mr. Mayor. Well, this should go quick. As soon as I say that, I jinxed it, but anyway. Knock on wood. That's not even wood. We want to start off, we told you at last council meeting, that we were going to give you an update on the budget, and this is what there is. There are no hints here at all, so don't, when you see this information, we're trying to put the foundation in, so that you have all the information that you need as you come to the decision-making process, which will take place in June, not June, but the spring, on adopting the budget. And so, we have a presentation for you tonight, and you've got the paper handed out. And Carol, would you start?
Letting you warm up? Okay.
Well, while we're waiting, one of the things that we're going to talk about tonight, in Sherry's report, is the 599 money. And that's a shorthand for a bill that got passed in the '70s, when there was this combat that was taking place between cities and counties over annexation. And the counties wanted a moratorium on annexation, and the cities were saying to the General Assembly, "You don't understand. The only way that we can diversify our tax base and grow is to annex." And so, what the General Assembly did was commission a study, in which they looked at what services they provide cities, and what services they provide counties. And they came down to law enforcement, and they realized that they fund the sheriff's department, but they do not fund any law enforcement for cities. And so, they came up with this amendment to the state code to create a section to provide financial aid to those localities with police departments. And they established a floor, and if the funding went below the floor, then it would automatically take off the moratorium on annexation. But they established the funding at a level high enough that it would take a while before it would go and hit the floor and go beneath it. Well, those were the good times. Now, it's 2014, 40 years later, almost, and guess what? Cities are not the only localities with police departments. There are many counties that have police departments, like James City County, for example, like Prince William, Prince George County, to name another. Also, several years back, the floor went away, and governors, over the years, had been recommending to the General Assembly less and less money. We get $5.8 million, and it's formula-driven. There are a lot of variables that go into the formula, population being one, and you can imagine that we had a population of X. When this formula went into effect, we got X minus Y now. So Sherry will give you a briefing and her point on the agenda about one of the bills that we're watching, and that's the 599. Well, let's talk about where we are in the budget process.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
We are, the purpose of this presentation is to give you current status on where we are in the budget development process, and just to refresh the tax rate comparisons that we had initially presented to you at your retreat in July of last year, and to give you the debt service projections for the general fund, and to touch briefly on OPEB. We are currently in the process of meeting with departments. We've gotten most of the requests in, and we are trying to assimilate all of the numbers and figure out where we are from a revenue and expenditure standpoint. We're also fine-tuning our revenue estimates as we continue to get updated information, and in particular, when we are finally able to get the estimates from the state of certain state revenues, including sales tax, we'll incorporate those as well. The budget schedule has the city manager presenting his budget recommendation to you on the 31st of March, so a little less than two months from now. You may recall this chart from the presentation that we made to you in July. These are the most recent fiscal stress numbers. Last year, we were 12th in the state. We've been running neck and neck with Norfolk, and we are now 11th in the state. And you can see the difference between us and Norfolk is small, but what's important is that we are classified, along with Norfolk, Newport News, and Hampton, as having high fiscal stress. The average for all cities is 105.08, so they're slightly more stressed on average than counties are. But this is based on our revenue generation capability and several other indicators, and it's a useful tool for presenting the background information as we put the budget together. Now, I'll turn to some of the tax rates. Our real estate tax rate currently is $1.27, and while we often hear that that is the highest tax, that Portsmouth is the highest tax city for real estate, you'll see, when we look at the chart comparing total tax burden, that we really are not the highest tax city in the area. In fact, our position has improved since we presented the information to you in July of last year. This is dependent upon assessed valuation, and our assessed valuation, in particular, our average residential property value is much less than some of our neighbors, in particular, Virginia Beach and Chesapeake. So, the tax rate needed to produce the same amount of tax is higher than it is in those cities. This chart shows you the real estate tax rate over time, and you can see that since 1990, the rate in 1990 was $1.32, and went up to as high as $1.45. And the average tax rate since 1990 has been $1.33. If we were to look, one of the issues that challenges us during budget time is that our real estate tax rate has never been equalized. And by that, I mean, when assessed valuations were falling, we had the opportunity to adjust the real estate tax rate upward, so that the amount of tax that we generated remained the same. And the city did not do that, and that meant that assessed valuations have fallen, our tax rate has remained the same for the past several years. So, the amount of real estate tax revenue that we get in has gone down, which creates some budgetary challenges. So, we looked at, if the rate were to be equivalent to what it was in 2010, it would be at $1.33 instead of $1.27. This shows you the personal property tax rate for vehicles and businesses, and you can see here, we are the highest in the area at $5. We've added charts on boat taxes as well, so that you can get a sense of where we stand. This is where we stand on pleasure boats. We are actually lower than Hampton, Newport News, and Suffolk at 50 cents. The boat tax for the commercial boats over five ton, we're second lowest only to Chesapeake at 50 cents, and you can see that Norfolk, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach are much higher.
Is that like your commercial boats, tug boats?
It's classified anything that's over five tons, and yeah, I think it's generally the commercial-type boats. We can get some clarification from the Commissioner's office. The motor vehicle license fee for vehicles under 4,000 pounds, we're pretty much right in the middle at $25. Hampton is the highest in the area at 35.
And that's the old decal, remember that?
Yeah.
That nobody uses anymore, for the most part.
On the hotel tax rate, all of, we're all at the same 8% rate. I believe it was Newport News that was previously at 7.5 and went up to 8 this past budget year.
But the beach does have a hotel district.
In Sandberg, yes, and so they have an additional tax for that. The meal tax rate, we're generally comparable to Norfolk and Suffolk. Chesapeake and Virginia Beach are slightly lower, and Hampton and Newport News are higher. We're at 6.5. The lower localities are at 5.5, and Hampton and Newport News are at 7.5. Admission tax, like hotel tax, we're consistent with our neighbors at 10%. We, I think we had this one in the last presentation as well, the cigarette tax rate. We're currently at 60 cents a pack, and we are closer to the bottom end of the range with that than the higher end. And we heard a budget presentation from our Director of the Health Department, and the Health Department is making a recommendation to all the cities in the area that they consider raising the cigarette tax rate in order to reduce cigarette consumption and have a positive impact on the city's overall health. So, you'll hear more about that from the Health Department and from Brandon, probably.
Yeah, but with CVS doing what they're doing, and some other folks talking about falling suit, this could be damaging to not only our city, but most, if they stop selling that product.
Well, what we need to do is figure out, what is the price of last year? At what point do you leave Portsmouth and go to Isle of Wight to buy a pack of cigarettes? Is it at 65 cents, or 75 cents, or just one?
Your gas rate, too, how much it's going to cost you for travel.
Sure.
To get that pack cigarettes.
And I need to make a correction. This is actually a fee, the stormwater utility fee, not tax. You can see that our fee is $111, and it's lower than Virginia Beach and Norfolk, but higher than Suffolk, Hampton, Chesapeake, and Newport News. The monthly trash collection fee, we are currently the highest at 33.36, and Newport News, there were a couple of localities that raised their rate this year. Newport News was one of them.
Without recycling, we should better bring that down.
It seems that way.
Which thing, Josh?
Well, let's look at the bottom line.
And this is the monthly water and sewer bill, assuming that 5,000 gallons is consumed. And you can see that we're, we tend to be on the lower end there. We're fairly close to Newport News, but much lower than Suffolk, which is the outlier at $91.30. So, this is the overall chart that shows you what the net tax burden is to the residents of the city. And you can see, when you consider the median home value in Portsmouth is lower, it's actually the lowest out of our neighboring jurisdiction. And this is for a single-family home, except for Suffolk, where we, they were not able to give us just the rate for the, or the amount for single-family only. But you can see that even at our $1.27 tax rate, that the tax that somebody's paying on a median home value in Portsmouth is quite a bit less than our neighbors, with the exception of Hampton, which has a median home value that's similar to ours. And when you look at all the other taxes and add those up, taxes and fees, on average, and this, we make some assumptions about, you know, a $10,000 average personal property tax assessment, the amount of the phone bill, and we use the Bureau of Labor and Statistics data on the average amount that a family spends eating out. We are, the only jurisdiction now that is higher taxed than us is Hampton.
Lower taxed.
Excuse me, lower taxed than us.
Hampton.
Is Hampton. And we, and our neighboring cities that are immediately adjacent to us, Suffolk and Norfolk, are considerably higher.
I wish Sherry would get back. Those folks ought to come here and spend.
While she's doing that, that chart we reviewed at the retreat, and we actually put a publication out in the Current.
And we did.
Showing all of our citizens. But that wasn't, at that time, that was just a tad different. I think there was maybe one other city with Hampton that might have been below us. So, this is up-to-date from what we did at the retreat.
Yes. So, we've updated the assessed valuation, and there were several localities that increased their, some of their fees. Several of the cities increased their tax rates this year. And so, you can see that we're, you know, our residents, on average, are paying less than they are in just about any other jurisdiction in the area. So, again, you know, the tax rate is really not indicative of what the tax burden is.
Or the fee burden, the total.
So, to calculate the real estate tax, you use the median home value of 151, 310?
Right. Yes.
Gotcha.
And again, that's for a single-family home.
And Chesapeake's median home value is higher than Virginia Beach's.
For a single family. That's, and this is based on data that we just got there this last week.
They're getting more money for that education.
All right. And this is a very important slide, because we've been talking about this, and we wanted you to see graphically what we were talking about.
Yeah, as you know, the city issued debt to finance the 70, almost $78 million courthouse project, and over time, we've had some other capital projects that were financed through debt. The courthouse has had the most significant impact, and our debt service burden in the general fund is projected to go up every year until we get to 2021. And the green shaded part, the blue part, 25.6 million is what we budgeted for total general fund debt service this year, not including the pension obligation bonds, which are funded through the ARC. And the green shaded part is how much above the baseline of this year, we're going to have to pay in debt service every year. So, the peak in 2018 is $3 million more than what we're paying in 2014.
And if you were to add each of those years that it increases above the blue line, it's roughly $15 million.
So, this is one of the challenging areas that we're going to need to see if there are any creative ways that we can address during the upcoming budget development. And one of the things.
And not only for this year, but for the years that it goes above the line. We're looking at a very creative way to handle that.
And this is just a reminder on OPEB, and these numbers have not been updated since 2012. But because of the, because the city essentially let anybody who retired from Portsmouth be eligible for our retiree health insurance, and because our retirees in the past have not been rated separately, over time, our, the UAL is the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. And you can see, as of 2012, we were at $196 million. The only city in the area that was higher is Newport News at 201,000. We were significantly, more than two times as high as Virginia Beach, which is a much larger city from an employee base standpoint. And you can see, too, as a percent of payroll, that third number column in, our liability is 277% of our payroll. That's by far the highest of any locality in the area. And we're continuing, we made some changes that we discussed with you this year that were made for the beginning of the plan year in January. We are continuing to develop opportunities for changes that we can make that will impact this liability in a positive way, because this not only gets to our OPEB costs that we have not been able to fund every year, but it also gets directly to our healthcare costs, which have been trending at a 9% increase, and in some years, even higher, based on what our actual experience is. So, this is just a reminder that this is, it's an important issue that hasn't gone away, and you'll be hearing more about it. So, in summary, we are, our goal during the upcoming budget development is to work hard to try to keep the bottom-line impact the same as we are now, meaning that the total tax burden would be approximately what it is now. That we may be challenged in doing that because of debt service and healthcare costs and some of the other, and jail per diem. There are other cost increases that we're facing that we're going to have to figure out, how we balance against revenue that, right now, is looking like it's going to be essentially flat next year.
Sure.
So, one of the things that we're looking at for debt service is whether we can create a sinking fund to cover at least a portion of that increase for the relatively short period of time that it is increased before the debt service level drops again.
Sinking fund.
And just finally, we're going to have to be prepared to make some difficult decisions on OPEB if we're going to be able to manage those retiree health insurance costs and manage our overall health insurance costs.
And we had that ARC on the OPEB at 16 million?
No, it's closer to 19 million.
Then it goes to 21, right? Can you elaborate on the sinking fund?
Yeah, we're trying to find a way to create a pot of money that we can use over the, can you go back to that slide? There you go. That we can use over these years that are in the green to cover the increase in debt service without having an impact on the real estate tax rate. And so, it would be a designation of a sum of money this year to carry us several years out into the future. The goal would be to carry it for the whole 15 million. The fund, the fund that is off the tax rate would be a real challenge.
What would the fund consist of?
It would be, most likely, your fund balance, and not hitting your fund balance below what the bond rating agencies want. They don't want you to spend any of your fund balance. The nice thing about this line is that it trends down, and goes below the current amount about, well, it does, in the year 20.
22.
2022. So, we're looking at a way to meet our financial goal of having a fund balance that is healthy, but at the same time, having a way that there's a soft landing for this impact of this increase in debt service.
But this is also a good illustration of why we want to move towards cash funding as much of the CIP as we can, because obviously, this doesn't even take into account the pension obligation bonds. We're already a relatively high debt burden with that, but any, anything that we debt finance just adds to this problem.
If it's GO bonds, if it's revenue bonds, it doesn't show up on that chart.
Churchland Bridge, actually, in the back? No.
No.
It's just existing debt.
And that will be part of our conversation when we talk to Sherry.
Okay.
And that was a, well, just not to, you brought it up, the Churchland Bridge is about a $29 million project, in which the city, a couple of years back, decided to pursue revenue sharing, which meant that it got split-funded between VDOT and the city. If we were to pursue that route, it would ultimately cost us $15 million.
For the one side, or both 15?
Both sides.
Both sides, right. Okay.
These are round numbers, of course. When we were up in Richmond on Thursday, we attended, we being Nita, and Roz, and myself, and Sherry, the Senate Finance Committee meeting, and this is late in the afternoon. As you know, Senator Lucas has a budget amendment in for the Churchland Bridge. He has several budget amendments in. And so, we spent, at the end of the meeting, a stand-up conversation with the staff member of the Senate Finance Committee. The two large money committees, the House Appropriation Committee and the Senate Finance Committee, have staff. And the staffs have a specialty. For example, one might have higher education, another might have transportation, another would have secondary education. So, we're having this conversation with the staff member that's got transportation, along with the CFO for the, for VDOT. And essentially, what we said is that we're going to hand you the keys to the project. We want you to take it over. And the reason why we want you to take it over, because we anticipate that this rickety old bridge is going to get more traffic because of this bad deal that the Commonwealth did on the tunnel. And so, that's why you should give this project a different look. And so, what we're looking for, then, is to get the state to fund the balance of the project. James, we put how much in it thus far, first from the city?
A few points is on there.
So, we're looking for VDOT to pick up about 27 million. Now, this has got, this has got an uphill battle now. I mean, it's, someone else would say, "Well, fund my bridge in Lynchburg," or "Fund my bridge in Charlottesville." And we would argue that the Commonwealth needs to fund this bridge because of decisions that were made within the last couple of years on the tunnel project.
Looks like Sherry's coming in on Skype.
I'd like to add, how can we do that? Do you have any questions on this? Can we get Sherry in with that?
Yeah, let's do that. I applaud your, John, I applaud your efforts to not let that real estate tax rate slip away.
Thank you.
Keep them have all they can afford.
What we're going to do, we're going to get Sherry in. Now, she's going to be in the dark. We can see her, she can hear us, but she cannot see us. And maybe the next time we do this, we might be able to get a camera so we can get a view of the council. But Sherry has been holding, as I've mentioned, and she's going to give us an update. And as she comes on board, so that we don't have dead air here, crossover is February the 12th. So, both chambers, the House and the Senate, are working very hard to get their bills voted either up or down. And when crossover happens, all the House bills that have been passed go to the Senate, all the Senate bills go to the House. And all the bills, except for the budget amendments, the budget amendments get extra time. They get until the 19th of February. Already, there's word on the street, we heard it last Thursday, that the session will most likely go beyond the scheduled end date because of the budget. Sherry, are you there?
She got disconnected, we have to.
Oh, okay, well.
It'll just take me a second.
Let me continue to tell you that, in addition to 599, we're looking at the bills that will have a significant impact on Portsmouth, either positive or negative. And Sherry spends all of her day chasing those bills, and it changes from day to day, depending on what happens with the committees.
Every city's going to be affected, I mean.
Yes, sir. And as you know, Senate Bill 19, which was the lottery bill, got reported out of the Senate Committee on Local Government. The strategy was to take it to the Senate Finance Committee. This was not a surprise at all, that the Senate Finance Committee.
You said lottery, you meant casino.
Pardon me?
You said lottery, you meant casino.
I meant casino. It was not a surprise that the Senate. It was not a surprise that the Senate Finance Committee took the bill over to the next year because their strategy was, is to have the Secretary of Commerce do a study over the next year of if this bill is passed and signed into law in the future, how can the funds go to assist transportation? Stay quiet.
Sherri, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Sherri, you have all the members of City Council present, along with staff.
Thank you. Can you see me?
Oh, no, we can't.
Wait a minute.
Smile, we can see you now.
Can you see all of me or no?
We see your right eye.
Right there.
You're good.
Is it too close?
Yeah, you can back up a little bit.
See, you need all the force.
You're talking about getting in our face.
Um, just a minute, let me see if I can figure out how to, no, that's the wrong way.
Yeah, you're doing it.
All right, Sherri, bring us up...
Welcome to the great firm. All right, good evening, members of, Mr. Mayor, well, sorry, Mayor, members of council and the city manager. Fortunately or unfortunately, you can see me. However, I cannot see you, but I can hear you guys. So, I'm going to give you a brief update of the General Assembly session. We are now, we have now just about reached the crossover period, and this is when the bill survives in the legislative process in the House of origin and sent to the opposite body for deliberations by the other body. Crossover will officially begin on Wednesday. However, in preparation for crossover, both bodies have been diligently working today and tomorrow to clear their calendars. Many of the committees are not scheduled to meet again until Wednesday. However, due to the large amount of legislation that came over from the House, some of the Senate committees will meet tomorrow, and one or two met today so they could begin getting ahead of their docket. For the city of Portsmouth, although specific legislative requests that were in our 2014 legislative package did not pass completely through the legislative process, we still have about 64 bills that staff has indicated some interest in because they have some sort of possible impact on the city of Portsmouth. 14 of those bills have been ready by staff to have possibly significant negative impact to the city. 37 have been rated to possibly have a significant positive impact to the city, and 14 have been rated to have some sort of a significant impact, and those are being monitored. In my last brief, excuse me, in my last briefing to council, council inquired about the status as to the business professional and occupational license, default taxes, bills, and machinery and tools tax bills. So, to give you an update on those, working in conjunction with our partners at Virginia Municipal League, I'm glad to say that all those bills have either failed or they've been carried over to the 2015 General Assembly session.
That's good.
Another public policy item that was included in our legislative package was the matter of enterprise loans. Our position was that we did not want to see these programs expanded or changed in any way without the appropriate amount of the company funding. They had, there were several bills that were submitted that would have altered the program without providing the necessary funding to keep it viable. Working in conjunction with our partners from Virginia First Things, we've been successful to have all of those bills either killed or carried over. Delegate James has requested an administrative study to be conducted by the Secretary of Commerce and Labor and through his office to determine how this program can be made more viable. All of the interested parties, including Portsmouth, agreed to have this study performed. Now, quickly switching focus along, quickly, sorry, quickly switching focus, along with working on the remaining bills of importance to the city, we have continued to work on the budget amendments. One of the budget amendments that we are pursuing is the funding for replacement of the Churchland Bridge. And as you may recall from earlier updates, Delegate James and Senator Lucas have submitted these amendments. Staff has been advocating with key money committee legislators and committee staff members to educate them on the importance of this matter. Along with those, there are a number of other budget amendments that we are advocating either for or against. To point out too, very briefly, the first one would be supporting the governance budget amendment for whole harmless measures for the public safety funding, which is the 599 fund. As you may recall, that's particular funding that is given to cities with police departments. Over the years, we have lost funding in that area due to the General Assembly not actually funding it at the level it should have been funded. It should have been increased along in the safe proportion as the general fund that has increased, but it hasn't done that. And we've had several whole harmless actions taken over the years to try to keep us at a level where we would not go below that would trigger the annexation moratorium, the ending of it, which is one of the reasons why they had the 599 fund in the first place. Currently, what we're experiencing is because of the formula that was set in place about 40 years ago for this fund, Portsmouth is set to probably to potentially lose some funding on 599 because of the fact that our population has decreased and as well as our crime rate. Another problem that we have because of formulary matters is the Virginia preschool initiative, and that also has a population component in it. And because our population has decreased, there's some movement afoot in the budget to reduce our slots for our preschool kindergarten slots. So, at this point in time, we're looking at possibly losing 97 slots in the budget. So, we are diligently working to try to make sure that that doesn't happen. The House and the Senate money committees are set to have their individual budget work completed by midnight Sunday, February 16. The budget amendment that survives this first step of the process will be known to the public by Tuesday, February 18. And once that information is known, those items that are in conflict between the two chambers will be the ones that are at the conference. And that is what I have for you this evening. Do you have any questions or comments?
Good, thank you.
Please ask her a question.
Yeah, I want to know whose idea was this?
It's a team idea.
It's a team idea, okay. This has been, what, 12 months in the making, right, Sherri?
We're going to get to, we're going to get to yes.
We'll get to yes sooner or later, well, great job. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Sherri.
Thanks, Sherri.
Yeah, great job. Keep up your work.
Good hearing your voice.
Great job, John.
That was neat.
We had that discussion, what, 12 months ago? He's trying to make it work. Our guy will not give up, I like it.
We'd like to, somebody, we want to know who left the freezer door, it's cold out there. We wanted to give you just a brief update on the two snow events, so you can get, and this will take only a couple of minutes, if you've got a minute.
Yep.
Nita?
What about this week's snow event?
Aw, man. We're saying no, go away.
Work to know on this one?
Well, work to know, you're right.
And this is information only, but it's good news, though.
Right, it is very good news. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I would like to share with you information about the last two snow events, knowing that we have another one possibly coming Wednesday night. The January 22nd event, we had about three inches of snow, and on the 28th through the 31st, depending upon where you lived, it was anywhere from 10 to 12 inches of snow. A few storm statistics, public works and fleet maintenance labor hours were significant, and I just have to give Youssef and Dennis and those guys just a big round of applause for their effort. It was a 24-hour-a-day operation. We had over 2,500 combined labor hours. So, for the first event, there were about 635 man-hours, and for the second event, it was over 1,800 man-hours, which is, that's a lot of work.
Absolutely.
It's a lot of work. And when you look at the sand and salt, the tonnage on that is significant as well. For the first event, it was 345 tons of sand and 172 tons of salt. For the second event, it was 1,315 tons of sand and 504 tons of salt. That's quite a bit when you look at how many pounds are in a ton.
Nita, have we replenished that yet?
Yes, it has been replenished.
Okay, so we're back to...
And then, now, you know, there's some hidden costs that you really don't look at when we have these events, and that's just all the extra work that has to be done to keep those trucks on the road. So, we did spend quite a bit of money for both events to maintain the fleet.
Visualize a NASCAR race in which you've got a pit crew, and that's what was happening with our snowplows. They'd go out, spread the sand and the salt, come back in, and they would go into one building and be washed down because they had all sorts of ice and road debris, not only on the windshields, but on the lights that, so that people could see them and be safe. And then, because it's mechanical, these things would break down, so they go over to the garage side. And that was a 24-hour operation, and you saw the article probably in The Currents with Donald Berry. So, it was a pretty awesome operation.
To put it in perspective, and this was John's idea, I have to really give him credit for this idea, it was really good. For the first event, if they drove one way in terms of the number of miles driven to spread the salt and clear the roads, they would have driven to Key West. For the second event, it would have been round trip to Spokane. So, it was about five, over 5,000 miles driven with these trucks actually clearing the snow, applying sand and salt, so it was significant. And that really does put it in perspective for you with respect to how much road was actually covered.
And we're kind of glad that they didn't drive south because if they knew the next storm was coming...
They'd get stuck in Atlanta.
You know, and if you notice, I did put the temperature at, in Key West, on that day, it was 70 degrees. So, it would have been very inviting to stay in Key West. A few other statistics in terms of our fire and police. The fire responded to 48 calls for service, they had 157 EMS calls, and then with those EMS, 94 fire trucks dispatched. Police on January 20th event had 24 reported vehicle crashes and 41 hours for closing of the West Norfolk Bridge.
Now, we didn't do that. That bridge is not our responsibility at all.
Right.
And VDOT and ERC decided to close the bridge. Well, who's got to police it? We got to police it.
Right. There were 38 reported...
Can we get to send them the overtime bill?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that is.
It was a state emergency.
Well, they also had on the January 27th event, 38 reported vehicle crashes and 68 hours of, for other incidents related to weather. The big number here, the total labor cost, for the first event, it was 18,000, the second event, about 70,000. And then, public utilities, we did have an issue with being able to read the meters under the snow. I mean, it's just not possible. So, basically, Brian put together a notice that's going to go out with all of the bills, letting people know that their bills are going to be estimated for this particular billing cycle, and then for the next billing cycle, we'll make adjustments. And we do want to take this time on behalf of staff, really, to give a special thanks to all of our dedicated employees that really worked tirelessly throughout the snow event.
They deserve it. And Nita, we also got a lot of positive comments in social media. You always going to have some critics, but overwhelmingly, people were pleased with the things that we were doing and some of the information we were providing, and so I just thought that was great. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to say, I think the other thing that needs saying, and I happened to speak to the sheriff over the weekend and talking about thanking him for what he did with his backhoes and clearing the fire stations and that things, and he made a comment, which I think was very apropos, which was about you, which was that the two of you were together at the compound or wherever, and there were you in your work boots and doing things and working with this guy that Tim wrote about in the paper, and the sheriff's comment was, when have you ever seen a city manager in work boots on a snow day at the compound? Hadn't been since Luke McCoy, we've seen that. And I thought that was, that was high praise and well deserved.
Good job, absolutely.
Team effort. Thank you. Our last, oh, let's do this one next. Patrick, this is, this is a lot of fun, too. Patrick has put together kind of a follow-up to Move to Portsmouth. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a brief presentation. We've briefed you on the Move to Portsmouth campaign in the past. You're familiar with the television commercials, and we've showed you some of the advertisements that we've done in the past, but when it comes to print advertising, we've really only been in one place, and that place is a publication called Welcome Aboard. Welcome Aboard is the military relocation guide, the Navy's authorized newcomer guide, mailed out by Fleet and Family Support Centers to everybody who gets ordered to come to Hampton Roads, lasts on the shelf about six months, and they print 50,000 copies. We run four ads in that publication each time it comes out, and when I shared them for this publication with Mr. Rowe, John said, gosh, I really like those. First and foremost, let's show them the council, but secondly, Patrick, I want you to work with Lavoris on getting these out regionally. So, let's expand the scope and where we put these ads beyond just that Welcome Aboard publication. This one actually is a little bit different from some of the ads we've run in the past in that we now have a renewed focus on tourism. One of the ads has a little bit more focus in that regard, and Mr. Schulte helped us create this one, so while it still has the, I'm sorry, this one is not, we'll get to that in a moment. Title, How You Live, depends a lot on where you live with some very nice scenes of the This one I kind of liked, Rush Home, Not Rush Aller. If you're assigned to the Naval Medical Center Portsmouth, the shipyard, Coast Guard's land area, Base Portsmouth of the 5th District, you work here. So, living here lets you spend more time at home, no tolls, no tunnels, no traffic.
You skipped one before that. Go the other way. There you go.
Oh, I did, thank you. A Set Course for Eagles. This one is a play on words, the Coast Guard Cutter Eagle, our fabulous golf course, and the fact that you can see American bald eagles in our beautiful nature preserves and parks. This is one that has a little bit more of a focus on tourism, so branching out a little bit, the people that are coming to the region for the Navy, maybe they don't pick us as the place to live, we still want them to come visit. This is an example of one we ran last year, and we've been running these for about three years now, but this is another one that plays on the traffic impact, and we don't say a lot, we just kind of show you. In blue are highlighted the military facilities in the city of Portsmouth, and in red are highlighted the choke points that you have to go through if you want to come to work in the city of Portsmouth. So, we all remember the Ring of Fire with the tolls, this is a little bit of a play on that, and again, the objective being to get these folks to live where they work, and we say that in the lower right corner. So, per John's direction, where are we headed next? We haven't quite decided that yet, but here are some possible places we can go. The Virginia Pilot, the equivalent of The Currents in the other cities, as well as possibly across the river in the peninsula and over towards Smithfield.
Great. Any questions?
It looks good.
Well, we have come to the end of the presentations with the PowerPoint, and we're at that point where you can have your discussion on the state of the city. You had agreed to put it on tonight's agenda and tomorrow night's agenda. So, we're ready to take notes.
What's been planned for us so far? Where we at now?
Not much, I mean, really.
Yeah, we, good evening, everyone. We are currently in the process...
We are currently in the process of planning our state of the city. Of course, we gave you the date for the meeting, last meeting, but now we're working on concepts and ideas, and so we wanted to come to you to get some general idea as to, you know, what you'd like to see in the presentation, you know, what the theme will be for the overall state of the city. Of course, you know, in previous years, we've done, the mayor does a speech, and we do a video presentation that tries to flush out the new developments, economic development that's going on in the city. And in previous years, we've had some conversations with you all in the City Clerk's Office to get your ideas of things that you might include in that. And so, of course, tonight, we're here to talk to you about some brainstorming ideas and things that you might want to see in the mayor's speech and/or in the presentation, video presentation as well.
Can I go in?
Well, one thing, you know, last year, the takeaway from it was that we opened a Chick-fil-A, quite frankly, and nothing wrong with that. I think we were all excited about that. But more, more happened in our city than that, and I just don't think it encompassed everything that happened on a positive note in Portsmouth last year. You had the healthy initiative, and sweatbands were given out, but I just don't think that's worthy of state-of-the-city stuff, quite frankly. You know, what Patrick just did here, I think if we're trying to attract businesses and people to Portsmouth, I think we have to put a face on this campaign, and the face is our communities. So somehow, I think we need to tell that story. You know, people who work in Norfolk and coming here every day, or Virginia Beach and coming here every day through the tunnel, I think they are going to be looking to come to Portsmouth. So we need to give them a reason to come, the same way with businesses. We need to accentuate the positive, the Kroger marketplace, obviously, and other things that have happened throughout the year. And also, some leaders, I've been to other state-of-the-cities where they recognize either the military presence, our military partners, as well as, I think, some of our own departments. But just, we need to ramp it up a notch from last year, my thought.
I'd like to tie in with what Councilman Moody said, thank you, Vice Mayor. I think we ought to discuss, talk about some of our short-range and long-range goals, where we lie with some of these things that we said we're doing, and if possible, give some type of timelines as to when we'll complete some of the short-range goals and the long-range goals, if possible.
Ms. Randall?
Okay, I'd just like to, I think we need to focus in on the fact of the diverse qualities that we have within our city. It is a multi-ethnic community, and when we look at our schools, we see a good example of that around, particularly, we look at our schools and our communities make up, we have a lot of information there. And in addition to taking in consideration the historic part, we have areas that have changed drastically of developing communities, and we need to let them know that they're, the city's not dead. We are still lifting up as new developments come on board, and focusing on some of the recreational activities, particularly with our young folk. And we have a lot of church groups and things that are doing things with our children. We need to show that we are truly a diverse city, that it's something here for all people, regardless of race, creed, or religion. So we're looking at diversity.
And to dovetail with what Bishop said on the long-term, short-term goals, I would hope that as much as we've talked about it this past year, the recreation plan, that we would have something concrete there, recreation centers.
But Bill, many of those two are tied right in with your schools, because we're utilizing our schools for the recreational activities for our, so they would dovetail right along with it.
Thanks. You got us good looks. We'll continue the conversation tomorrow evening, we'll type this out. We do need a closed meeting tonight, and I think you have the...
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 for the following purpose: Discussion concerning the performance of a council appointee to a city commission as permitted under subsection A1.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Ms. Saxon. Ms. Randall?
Yes.
The mayor write us out. We are in closed meeting, thank you.